First item on this administrative agenda will be a public hearing for 108 Sharon Lane. Uh, declared as a public nuisance. So right now I'm hoping the public hearing, uh, is considered 108 Sharon Lane. Is there anyone here for or against who would like to speak on this particular, uh, address? 108 Sharon Lane. Since there is none, I'll close this public hearing. Next we'll move to the review of the agenda for our regular council meeting. After the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, uh, we'll consider the minutes from the regular council meeting held on August the twentieth, uh, council. If there are any questions or concerns regarding the regular council meeting held on August the twentieth? Thank you. Next would be to set the agenda. If there's any item to be added, uh, to consider that. The next item will be a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance. And that is the 108 Sharon Lane. Is there any comments from the council concerned in declaring that property a public nuisance at 108 Sharon Lane? Next item will be a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance and setting a public hearing for September the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at five P M. For two oh seven Fairview Street and two fourteen Woodland Hills Drive. Uh, I'll ask Mr. Brett or Matt, uh, about those properties. Has there been any improvements or?
There has not been any improvements as of today, so they're still considered a nuisance. I believe I provided future.
Right, you did. Okay, thank you. Counselor, any comments or concerns regarding those two properties? Next item will be a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lean at two twenty-seven Bermuda Street. Uh, Matthew?
Yes, sir. We had an appointment sending the, the, um, invoice to us.
We did. Counselor, any comments or concerns regarding, uh, confirming that cost of weed lean at two twenty-seven Bermuda Street? Next item will be to set a public hearing for September the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at five P M. For a proposed rezoning of two twenty-eight, two nineteen, one ninety-five, one eighty-seven, one sixty-three Troy Street. From I two to R one. Brett, you'll come up and speak regarding that.
Delayed, um, she bought the lot on corner Troy at Simmons', and she wanted to put, uh, build a house there. And, uh, what are we to rezone that piece of property? I have to go back and rezone all those properties. Or, uh, can't really spot some of the purpose. So I had to send out the education to all those residents up there and then I had to receive them back from them.
Okay, thank you, Brett. Counselor, any comments or concerns regarding, uh, the proposed rezoning of those properties?
There's already cones there.
Which is my preparedness is already too.
Yes.
Uh, one house likely burned down. For industrial?
Any other comments, counsel, concerning those properties? Thank you. Next item will be the approval of a change to our, for Atrip Utility Project. Uh, Ryan?
Yeah. That's pretty easy. Uh, it was an estimate that didn't come in that high, so I think it's like nearly four thousand difference. And we're going to have a four thousand dollar savings.
That's good.
That's a good change of order. As for the water and sewer enhancements for the service road?
Where Taco Bell is?
No, service road. Our new service road is going to be, uh, over my slide right now.
Thanks, counsel. Any other comments or concerns regarding this Atrip Utility Project? Thank you. At this time, I defer my seat to our council president. Because she get paid big bucks.
You were doing great job.
All right. Item number ten is a first and second reading application, one four zero, special events retail for the applicant El Colosio LLC. Um, doing the, under the trade name Dale County Bicentennial Celebration. So this is the, uh, event license for the centennial celebration that will take place on next Thursday. September, oh, September the seventh. I'm in homecoming mode. Seems like it's three, it is three weeks away, twenty-sixth, the third day, yes. Um, so council members, oh, first report.
Oh, it's gonna be easy. Yeah, we can vote to fall ahead. They don't have a license there before. We have no objection if it's been first and second.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any additional questions, uh, for accepting this as a first and second hearing? Item number eleven is a for reappointment for the Historic Preservation Commission Mayor.
For Leah, she just got out of the meeting, so she knows, she knows what they talk about it to me.
I do. Um, so Ms. Angela Maltzby and Ms. Laura Bruce are up for renewal for their appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, we'd like to reappoint Ms. Angela Maltzby. She's agreed to continue her service. However, Ms. Laura, uh, Bruce has asked to step down. And in our meeting, uh, we had a couple of names suggested, so we gotta make some phone calls and get some bio information on the two that were recommended to us.
Okay, so do you?
We need to defer Laura's replacement until next week, but we can go ahead and replace Ms., or we appoint Ms. Angela tonight. Will that work?
Will that work? Either that or taking both, I mean, did you take her counsel just last week? What would you guys? Item number twelve is a resolution, uh, I'm just gonna kind of cover twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Um, resolutions reappointing the presiding municipal court judge, the assistant municipal court judge, the municipal court prosecutor, and the municipal court public defender. So Mayor, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, we would like to recommend reappointing all the people that are currently there.
Okay. Council members, do you have any comments or questions for any of those? My only question is this. I, the reason that we're having to reappoint them in the middle of this term is it's usually a two-year term. And the reappointment is a two-year term, which actually puts the next council doing an appointment, I say. So it's going to make it being off.
Judge, should this be an appointment for the duration of our administration because in our, our meeting, we don't want to set?
Correct. It usually is, and then we reappoint again halfway through.
If you're going to do that, I don't think there's any authority for a one-year appointment. There is authority just to keep going. No, no worries. You don't have to.
So no resolution needed. So no resolution is needed.
If you, if you're gonna do it just for one year, they, they stay in office until their successor is named.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I joke, I joke about this, but I was judging Daleville for forty years, and I don't think I was appointed the fourth time, so.
So in that case, we would actually remove items twelve, twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
If your goal is to have the next administration start with a two-year appointment, and there's nothing to say you have to do that. But if that's the way you want to do it, you just leave these in place.
Okay. I just don't want to end it high if you're doing a binding two years for the next.
And to clarify this, how, because we doubt it actually.
Because we need an extra year. Yes. Not that, uh, because of this, this term, and it's maybe for five years, usually their, their term won't ever run out, and we would be getting ready to, to switch over. So at that, uh, so because of that, do we just want to leave as is?
Right. Because if we do nothing, then the next administration will appoint department he is to, and also to include the judge.
They, they score, just stay in place until their successor is named.
Council members, is?
So they just remove that?
There's a less work for him. He's great. So with that, uh, we can go out to the audience. Are there any persons in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular?
My name is Cheryl, I'm the whip of the American Southeast Alabama Court Services. We provide community corrections and court referral services for several counties in the Whitegrass area. Our administrative office is here in Ozark. And for many years, we have, um, shared a building with the Mary Hill Family Services Center that has been provided by the county. Mary Hill, I'm thrilled to say, is growing by leaps and bounds, which means they're kicking us out, so we have no home. Um, the benefit has been that we haven't had to pay rent. We have shared some expenses with them, um, over the years. And then for many years, we covered all of the expenses of that building, um, trying to keep it flowed for Mary Hill Center. But, um, anyway, we're desperate for some office space. Um, I spoke with, with the mayor, and he indicated that it might be possible for us to use some space in the Perry Rec Building, which has been vacant for quite some time. Um, it's not particularly suited for our needs. I need a wall built, and the carpet is really nasty. But I'm hoping that the city would consider us a benefit to the community. I'd also like to point out that, um, in the last few years, especially since COVID, the indigency rate for clients who come through the court system has increased significantly. Many of those are residents of the city of Ozark and especially of Dale County. Um, we have absorbed that cost for those drug swings, for those monitoring sessions, for sometimes sending them off to treatment. It would be a great benefit to us if we could continue some sort of a relationship that allowed us not to have to pay for office space so that we can continue to provide those services for the indigent clients that come through the court system. So I'm asking for use of the Perry Rec Building, and I'm asking if we can please have a wall built and maybe some carpet for them.
Okay, so with that, um, the council can't, and we're asked that just way, way of the hand. But what we can do, um, if the mayor would like to present us with some sort of plan that we can put on the.
We'll maybe create a price for the wall and the carpet and, uh, that kind of stuff. We just really talked about that tonight, so.
And we still have a lot of stuff. There's still a lot of stuff stored in the building that needs to be moved, and we've looked at that and tried to figure out how to make all that space. It would also provide a place for us to have the level one and level two classes for DUI cases. And that's a twelve-hour class and then a twenty-four-hour class that we have not had in Dale County for several years tomorrow. Our citizens have had to travel to Dougland to make that class, but with that space, we can have a class.
I guess my only question for the mayor is, were, were there some sort of concerns with the building, the reason we doubted it in the first place?
Well, I mean, we just had people scattered out.
Okay, okay.
And I think it's fine for what they're wanting to do. Uh, we just need to try to work up some prices. We may begin next week. We're out of sync, so we, we'll have, we'll have the prices.
I think we're flexible on about being the kind of one that's fine by October, and one of it also we talk. Thank you all so much for your consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to, uh, or that has any questions or comments for the council on any subject in particular this evening? Okay, with that, I'll go to final comments. Mayor?
Okay, uh, going back to alcohol license. Uh, I've mentioned to y'all last time that we wanted to pursue getting one for Civic Center after this one event. After Ozzy and I got to looking at that and, uh, looking at the liability and the manpower and that kind of thing, we're going to put that out for bid, let anybody that has a license that would like to manage that, uh, let them quote us some prices. Maybe we can make some money off this event, but, uh, we'll get back unless somebody has a problem with that. Uh, our M sixty tank we did for the pad last week, um, I've gone from the, uh, Arby that's currently on Fort Nova Sale to the head of M one, to a guy that kind of directs M one services. They're trying to create a way that we can possibly move that tank with some community service type work, if they have the equipment to move it. Now, I know there's equipment on Fort Rucker that, Fort Nova Sale, they can move it with, but we're just trying to, trying to get all that organized, so we don't have to pay much money. Very few people have the equipment to move a forty-six ton piece of equipment. And more complicated than that is, it's gotta be, we install the trailer and we install the trailer because it does not run, so.
I'm surprised you're not like, oh, it goes in my bag.
I know, right? Lucky dabble in that engine. I'd be like, okay.
The, uh, we'll tell y'all, the, uh, as of yesterday, the color wash guys are hoping to be up and running sometime this week, so I know everybody's excited about that. The access road that Ryan mentioned earlier, supposed to start on that September the sixteenth. The deal that we've been trying to work with Dale, it's in their court. They have the agreement. And, uh, they're wanting to look at rewording some of it, but, uh, we're waiting on them to get back with us. The Civic Center, uh, that's, uh, got a little more urgency to it since we got this big event coming up. The, uh, projection streams are up. They look great. The stage is supposed to be in and set next week. The demo on the one side of Flower Center, uh, DJ Hyde has that contract. He's moving, uh, equipment in there, trying to get it set up to, to get that started. Our goal was to get that done before the end of the year, so we, uh, we're working on that. We have sold an additional ninety-six flags, so we're looking at where we're going to foot those because we want to keep them in a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit area, so we don't have people doing sixty-five and seventy try to reach sides. We may wind up doing some, like up and down both sides of Broad Street, some other areas, but we'll, I, I got Ryan looking at that. The villages, uh, they are framing a one house, and we have the plans for two more to get started, so that's a good thing. The C D G, C D V G, uh, roadwork that we have planned, that's supposed to start on Friday. The, uh, concrete pads at, uh, basketball courts in Old Everett, they are formed up. They're supposed to start pouring, those at five o'clock in the morning, so hopefully the rain will hold off before we get that done. The Christmas parade, we've set for December the tenth, and I have asked Mr. James Harris to be the grand marshal. I don't know, James, uh, older gentleman that's a retired dispatch sergeant major. There is a campaign going on. It's called Live, Live Locally, Alabama. It's a campaign put together by, uh, league municipalities. We are already doing most of what they're doing and trying to promote our city and shop local and all that kind of stuff. But Holly, Denise, and I are working on trying to format it, put it into their, their news releases and things, just to kind of be in compliance with what they're, they're trying to do. We've been, uh, or I've been working with Boys and Girls Club on their rebuilding project, getting prices together on different aspects of the construction. And, uh, hope to award some of those, they will be awarding them, uh, sometime in the very near future, like Luther thing and that kind of stuff. So, uh, hope to assist in activity there pretty quick. We're also working with Mr. Gertrman and the, uh, uh, high school on the baseball facility at the batting cages over at Eagle. Uh, we, we went back and asked him to draw plans before we can get that pricing on it, so, uh, hopefully we'll hear more about that a little later. We did get fifteen thousand dollar R C N D grant on our baby box that we did a while back. That had kind of fell through. Uh, we're not real sure how, but last week they found the money and the next day they lost the check, so, so that didn't work out. You'll see this, and I'm prepared for y'all reviewing the council page. Uh, y'all take that and look at it. Let, uh, Chris and myself want to know if y'all want to put that on the agenda. This is up to date. I either talk to the mayor or the city clerk in each one of the cities. And I will point out to you, in case it's a little misleading, on the op numbers, it's a four hundred, one fifty, and one fifty per month. That is, you get another hundred and fifty after basic C M O hours, another one fifty after the advanced. So they get a total of seven hundred a month or eighty-four hundred a year. That's kind of a moot point now because the league of municipalities and the state legislature passed a law that is requiring that, so. But you can see, y'all are way behind, uh, most places, uh, and you can see that it has not changed in twenty years, so y'all need to both know what you want to do. I, I highly recommend this change. The, uh, we already talked about the letter that I sent y'all about from this level wood. On November the nineteenth, uh, we have a farm city banquet at six thirty that night. We also have a city council meeting at five o'clock that night, so I didn't know if y'all wanted to try to have a short agenda, get out of here, go to farm city, or if you want to try to move that meeting. But, uh, that's something y'all just need to talk about.
So on the nineteenth, Chris is going to be at a conference anyway? On the ninth, you said November nineteenth, correct?
Well, we need to just work up something, put something out about moving that day. We can do it in the next day, right? And, um, there's a couple of sheets floating around here that shows a picture of a football field. It's probably seventy-five percent more now, because that was a hundred block, but they're really growing that artificial turf out. I believe that's all I have.
Councilman Edinger? Councilman Jackson?
Ask the mayor about, uh, the C D V G grant, is that, is that the streets over around Borkin?
San, San and Troy, Miss Parker, Boyton, Paul.
And maybe we ever, uh, kind of address how we would, uh, manage these gate jam?
Uh, we are waiting on basketball season for one, but it should be ready to go.
Thanks, and I commend you for allowing the D is to be, you know, taken for the citizen or for alcohol, you know, service. That's the right way to, to go, to deal it out. And we need, right, thanks.
Councilman Rob?
Just update, uh, Carroll High's football game has been rescheduled from Friday night to Saturday morning at eleven P M. At Becker's Memorial Station against Charles Anderson. It's the same time as the Elton Wisconsin game.
Why did they play that?
It's, it's a combo of two, but I think mainly is the lack of available refs. I mean, it's a, it's a big problem.
Councilman Michaela? Um, yes, so I, um, just previously to this miss, um, meeting, I had a meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission. I sit on that commission as a councilperson. But they asked me to give a little shout out for October the twenty-second. We're having a, um, a cemetery tour, historic cemetery tour, the three cemeteries in Ozark, as well as a visit to a local speakeasy. So we're going to be selling tickets for twenty dollars apiece, and you'll be able to get them at City Hall from Ms. Heather. But, um, there's only twenty seats available, and this is our first year doing it. So if you're really, really interested, you can call the city and ask to speak with Heather. She'll put you on R S V P list, and we'll be able to get the information out to you. I'm really looking forward to it. We got a local, um, coroner involved, and some other local historians are going to be on this, uh, trail, telling us a little bit about some of the people, some of the more notable people that are buried here in Ozark that I quite frankly didn't know about. So I think it's gonna be really, really easy, uh, interesting, and then we've got a fun spot to stop at the end of the night, um, to just kind of relax and, and relax and enjoy the atmosphere. This will serve as like a fundraising opportunity for our preservation commission so that we can get some needed surveys and whatnot for our, you know, establishing our historical commission.
Any ghost stories involved in this?
Just maybe, yeah. Yeah, we've got some, um, really good ideas, and it's October the twenty-second. I believe that's a Tuesday. This is a Tuesday, um, six o'clock is a meeting time, and then we'll go for a couple hours. It's only twenty dollars for a ticket, so you're gonna get a lot for your twenty dollars.
Did I understand you say the three cemeteries?
Yes. Claybank, Union, and the one by the Baptist church.
Well, there are.
There are four. We got Race Track.
Four. That would go to that one, one at Claybank, and the one that would cross at Lutheran Baptist. There is a fourth cemetery, but we're not going to that one.
There are several cemeteries. We're just going to three this time.
We're going to three.
That does not include, uh, Race Track.
Isn't it? Y'all opted not to do Race Track because it's gonna be in the dark, and we were afraid of tripping hazards, something like that. Claybank Cemetery, the one, the city cemetery by Lutheran Baptist, and what's the third one?
Westview.
Oh, Westview, the main one, that's cool. Okay, excuse me.
So we're not doing Woodlawn as well?
Correct.
So it's basically five cemeteries?
Yeah, we're limited.
Just a couple of.
We have a limited, it's a couple hours, so we're limited about time.
There's a whole bunch, but they're just doing a couple of.
Yeah, sorry. That way I missed the one. I'm having a glass, so I can't really read the paper.
There's actually three cemeteries adjacent to the one that everybody thinks is the best church.
Thank you. Um, so thank you, Councilman Jackson, for, uh, stepping in in my absence. We actually got the news late this afternoon about the, uh, football game change, and so I have been stuck in logistics mode. And so I was like, hi, City Council, I have to go. Um, so yes, the football game will happen on Saturday, not on Friday. Um, also, in three weeks, Carroll High School will be having its homecoming, and along with that, there are a lot of community activities. So we are having the bicentennial event on the twenty-sixth at Civic Center, which we do have tickets for available from Heather. And, uh, on the twenty-seventh at one P M. will be a citywide parade that is going to happen going down Broad Street, uh, going from high school down around Goose Bridge and all that kind of stuff. And they are inviting every single graduating class of Carroll High School ever. They are just, they're just like, we want to bring back all of the glory days. So if you're a graduate of Carroll High School. So, if you're a graduate of Carroll High School and wanna get in on it, there are plenty of things going around on Facebook about that. The game itself, they wanna pack out the stadium because of the new turf and everything, so there were just a lot of community things happening towards the end of the month, and I'll also reiterate it next week as well. But there's just a lot going on in town for the next three weeks, so...
And food trucks, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. On Friday also, they are gonna have a big tailgate event, and they're gonna have food trucks and all of that, so you can actually tailgate before the game on Friday evening as well, after the parade. So, it's gonna be a huge afternoon, and all of those art state schools is getting out at 11:30 to participate in all of these events, so...
That's the way it was.
A big, huge community turnout for that.
Yeah, that's the way it was back when I was in school, everybody got out, the afternoon parade, I mean, people around.
Yeah, so that's what they're wearing back, just in case you hadn't heard about it yet. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big to-do. Okay. So, with that, I will call this meeting to a close, and we'll begin the next meeting in three.
And they'll have tea tables and everything?
They call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order, it will begin this evening in prayer, led by Councilman Infiger, and the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Blankensack.
May yes, please. Dear Godfather, we just thank you so much for the faith that you give us, Lord, and blessed is the Bible, thank you for your mercy and your grace, and thank you for this meeting, Lord, and we pray peacefully, Lord, and just do our sins with your mercy, and just bless our poor, blessed citizens of Ozark, and each and every one of you, Lord, and thank you for it. Amen.
Let's close with a fire, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on August 20th, 2024. What are the wishes of the council?
Go ahead. Madam President, I approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on August 20th, 2024.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to be set the agenda with the removal of Resolution 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as amended? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties of public nuisance at 108 Sharon Lane. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution declaring certain property a public nuisance to 108 Sharon Lane and move for its adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on declaring this property a public nuisance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance and setting a public hearing for September 17th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance and setting a public hearing for September the 17th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. for 207 Fairview Street and 214 Woodland Hills Drive.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on declaring these properties a public nuisance and setting a hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is confirming, a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lien. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lien at 227 Bermuda Street and a amount of $200, move for its adoption. Well, correct, and a amount of $400.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on confirming the cost of this weed lien? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is setting a public hearing for September 17th, 2024, for a proposed rezoning. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set a public hearing for September 17th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. for a proposed rezoning of 228, 219, 195, 187, 163 Troy Street from I-2 to R-1 in Luther Spru.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is the approval of a change order for the ATRP utility project. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to be approved the change order for ATRP utility project and move for its adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving the change order for this project? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is a first and second reading application for special events retail. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve the first and second reading application, one for the special events retail applicant help of Lassie Hill for the Dale County Vicentennial Celebration.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this as a first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is a board reappointment. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to reappoint Angela Moskowitz to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Say.
No, go ahead.
So, is that less?
Less.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this reappointment? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Please note that there's a core report and a financial report in your package. And with that, we will go to final comments. Mayor?
I'm happy.
Councilman Infiger?
I'm here.
Councilman Jackson?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Pearl?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Harlow?
No.
For me. I hope everyone has a wonderful day, and we'll see you next week. Oh, just kidding.
Can I adjourn?
I cannot adjourn, I'm without a motion. Do I have a second? Do we have any discussion on that? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's pass the agenda. I hope you...